Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. If everyone would please stand, face the flag, and if so inclined, join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nice crowd this evening. Okay, anybody have any ups or extras that we need to add for the agenda? If not, I would look for a motion to approve as listed.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Jerry, seconded by Kurt. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Carrie. Schedule presenters. We have our annual audit presentation. Brad is here from Amduiken Myers to bring us up to date on how our year went and other things.
Perfect.
Your floor.
Thank you for having me tonight. You have some reports. I sent the reports up for me before I, as I came in today. So the one, one of the reports, the one to clear cover is that our management letter was primarily what I'll be going through. The other is our actual financial statements with our opinion letter in it. If there's anything in the management letter that you want, or have specific questions on that, we can find in the report itself, we can open it up to that. Otherwise, primarily just stick to that management letter. So the first page of our management letter outlines our responsibility in performing the audit, and that's to give an opinion on your financial statements in accordance with parent's, such with accounting principles. We are issuing a clean opinion on your financials, or what we refer to as an unmodified opinion. So that's what you're looking for when you have an audit performed. As part of arriving at that, as part of arriving at that opinion, we'll look at your internal controls. So if we see transactions are handled by one person from beginning to end, from maybe when cash comes in, to when it gets recorded in the system, to when it gets deposited in the bank, those would be areas where we would bring that to your attention here, maybe the higher risk of fraud or misstatement, if no one else is really watching that money coming in. Or it's the same thing with expenses going out, those types of things. So if there's any of those things that we think should be brought to your attention, we'll report those as findings within management. So we do, we are, we did have three findings this year. One on page three related to the preparation of financial statements. And this one was added probably four or five years ago now. Standards has changed and really wanted, the standards really want us to distinguish between what we do as auditors and what management's responsibility is. It is management's responsibility to prepare the financial statements, so that's really where this comes from. Because we're drafting the financial statements, which we do for 85 to 90% of the clients. We work with a lot of districts your size and other clients that are similar size with similar staff. So this is one that we draft as part of the financial statements. We do review the financial statements and take responsibility for them, but there is, there's still a level of segregation of duties there that is why we report this finding. So nothing to be really concerned with. Again, we have this in, if you look at probably 70% of the school districts out there, this issue will be in there. So nothing to be alarmed at there. But again, it's just outlining whose responsibility it is. 2017-2 on page four. Student activity counts, the segregation of duties. And again, this one is related to the one person having, doing more than the duty, than the four duties that are out there. Authorization of transaction custody, record keeping, and reconciliation of the accounts. So again, with limited number of staff, there's probably some things that you can do to segregate some of these duties a little more. But the way it stands now, I just want to pay attention to the transactions going through the, if anything looks unusual or whatever, make sure you're asking good questions and getting good answers. So that was the two fines we had this year. Last year we had a compliance fine that they were just reporting an update on with student activity account balances. Those are not required, those cannot be a negative balance at year end. There was, I believe, one account last year that was in negative. So those were all positive this year. So he's corrected that finding for this year. Page five, I'll just point out the bullets there, the significant estimates that are in the financial statements. Depreciation is one, so when your capital assets be decreased, or determine how many years those will last, and then depreciate or expense those out on those number of years. So some of those assets may not last as that long, some may last longer. So that's one significant estimate. The receivable from Department of Education, it's based on student numbers. They really don't finalize those revenue numbers until almost June of the following year. So that's another estimate that we point out. The other post-employment benefit liability is another liability that's out there that is based on future benefits of retired employees. Then the last one, the biggest estimate of all, the pension liabilities. This year, your, what's reported on your book for the Public Employers Retirement Association, or PERA, is $2.1 million liability. And the Teachers Retirement Association, you have a $22 million liability out there. And that's allocated to you based on the unfunded liability at the state level. At the TRA level, they have an actuary, they'll perform an actuary on the fund. And whatever that unfunded liability is, it's allocated out to all participating members of the plan. So this year, the TRA jumped significantly from last year to two, up to 22 million. And that was related to the discount rate. They were projecting a discount rate of eight percent in the past, that you, that the plan was going to earn eight percent on all investments. They dropped that down to 4.66% based on recent activity in the last three years, I think they based it on. So that jumped that 20, up to 22 million from, it was probably eight million last year. So significant adjustment to your, to your government-wide financial statements. These liabilities aren't anything that needs to be funded in any way. So you don't have to worry about increasing your levies or anything to pay more into these funds. The other thing you may worry about, and I haven't really heard whether TRA or PERA are going to increase contribution rates for employees or employees. That's the only thing that may increase. There's nothing you can do to reduce these liabilities, other than something that will affect everybody in the plan. Page six is just some required communication you have. You can read through if you so desire. Page seven, we look at the general fund budget to actual. You can see your general fund, you did amend your budget at year end, or close to year end. So your final budget amount was 12.2 million. Actual revenues was just under 12 million, so you had about $250,000 variance from what you budgeted, what actuals came in. Expenditures, you had about a $50,000 variance over what you budgeted for expenditures. Overall, you can see your change of fund balance decreased $118,000. So finished the year at $821,000 fund balance. The following page, I think is what you should look at, I guess. So here we're looking at the fund balance of general funds from 2013 to 2017. So that first column is your total fund balance. So back in 2013, you had a fund balance of $1.8 million. 2017, you're about a million dollars less than that, at $821,000. So it's been decreasing almost every year. 14 and 15 stayed pretty steady. But each of these years has decreased, I'd say significantly, down to $821,000. So at year end, your total fund balance, as compared to your expenditures, is 6.71%. And your unassigned, that's not restricted for any specific purpose, is at 5%. So that's something you're really going to want to watch. You don't want that definitely to go in the negative. It could be in a SOD position if it would get into a negative position. So you need to be looking at your expenses, as well as your revenues in the coming year. Page nine, we used to, we had this, have this chart included in here, just because of the significance of the tax shift in the last, you can see back in 2014, it shifted your revenues $502,000 that year to the negative. These past few years, it hasn't significantly affected, and I don't see it significantly affecting your revenues in the coming year. So this is probably a chart that we'll be taking out going forward. But this is kind of how the state adjusts your taxes and your state aids, based on different things to balance their budget. Page 10 shows where your revenue sources are coming from in your general fund. And then we have a per ADM as well. So bottom line here, revenues, you're receiving about $10,500 per student in revenue from, majority is coming from state sources. You have the next major category would be property taxes. But you can see on the chart below, the majority of your revenue is coming from the state sources, with that blue line significantly higher than any other line on the, on the chart. So it just goes to show you how important it is for the student numbers, because you do receive the significant amount of your revenues from those. So you're receiving about $10,500 or just under $10,500 in revenue in your, on the next page, you can see on page 11, we have the expenses, and you're spending about $10,700 per student. So, which results in then decreasing your fund balance again this year. So you're spending more than you're receiving in per student, about $250. Page 12, your debt service fund. Here we have a chart of your debt service requirements going out to 2024. So you will spend about $202,000 in debt service requirements over the next six years, seven years. You did refund the 2008 A bond in fiscal 18 now. So that will change this chart somewhat, but still probably spending about $2 million per year in debt service requirements going forward. And you have the debt service fund and in fund balance was $7.5 million. A lot of that was cash with escrow to pay out the 2007 bond that was refunded in FY17. So you are, you are letting enough to support these debt service payments and meet your obligations. Building construction fund, this fund was for, you have a fund balance of $50,000 at year end to, for the remaining project costs. I believe there's about $70,000 of cash in this one. Then your food service and community service funds on page 13. See, both these funds have decreases in fund balance, $17,000 decrease in your food service fund. Ending fund balance in there is just over $4,000. So again, you'll see on the next page, that fund balance in the food service fund has been decreasing the last four years as well. Then your community service fund had $112,000 decrease. Community service fund balance though, $131,000. Recommended a minimum level of $88,000 in here. So your community service fund is still, has sufficient resources. It's just the decrease this year, you don't want to just continue that going forward. Then page 14, we're talking, here we're showing the fund balances for each of the operating funds, your general, food service, and community. So this would exclude not operating, like for instance, the debt service and the construction funds. So if we take a look at these, you can see again, the general fund has decreased each of the last four years. Food service, again, that one has been decreasing. And your community service fund also has been decreasing. So each one of these funds have, you'll need to take a look at each one of them and change that trend. Average daily membership, second to line, second to last line I have in there. 2014, you had 11, 69 students. 2017 has decreased, even though you're, you're up from 2016, but it's 42. So still down from your numbers in 2014. And then we have the expenditures, or general fund expenditures per ADM there too. So those have been steadily decreasing over the last four years, which will happen with inflation alone. The last few pages here, we got the new standards that'll be coming out in the next few years that'll be implemented. We'll be working with Josh to get these into your statements. There's nothing in these that you'll need to pass at the board level. There's no resolutions with any of these that you'll need to pass. There'll just be some note disclosures that will, will get into the financial statements as the, as if required to be implemented. Other than that, that's really about it. Again, I think the main message is turning around those, the fund balances that are decreasing, especially those pre-funds. The debt service fund's doing well. Your community service fund is, has sufficient resources. You just want to turn that trend around. And then the food service and general fund that, that address those this year.
We are seeing significant lower numbers of students in our kindergarten, first, second. The incoming grades are just significantly less from 100 kids, you know, in our senior high, all the way down to incoming of 65. Are you seeing that across the board at these other schools? Because that, that has been, especially when you're playing at the last two years, been our most difficult thing to kind of get a hold of, when we're not really small enough to go to three sections. But, you know, we've got this history of being at four sections, and it's a delicate balance. We have not made any reductions in the last two years. Because we feel like when we passed that referendum, we made a commitment to our community to kind of maintain where we're at. But with these low class sizes coming in, are other schools seeing this? Is this common, or?
I don't see, no one has said anything to me as far as the lower numbers in the lower grades. I know, speaking from personal, in my school, in our school in 196, we're in the Eagan School District area. In our elementary school that we go to, our kindergarten class is out. So we had to add a teacher this last year.
Right. Okay. Well, I think, you know, I mean, we know that that's part of the discussion is, you know, what are we going to do with these smaller class sizes? But then they bounce back up again too, in a, in a couple of years. You know, you've got a three-year-old class that I think is going to be really big again. So I guess it's a balancing act.
Yeah.
Okay.
Page 11, going back, I'm just picking up the expenditures by program. And now the per ADM is basically, we're spending per pupil in each of these different categories. And the prior year ADM is last year's expenditures, so.
Divided by last year's ADM.
Right, so we go, this year we're up about, you're saying $220 per student?
Yep.
And if you break that down, it looks like the elementary, second year regular instruction, your special ed instruction, and possibly the instructional support services. Would be about the three biggest ones. I'm assuming elementary and second regular instruction, that's, what is that exactly?
That's all your teachers and.
Teacher payroll?
Yeah.
Okay, and then the special ed is, that's for all the extra on top of the, not, not teacher instruction, but more.
Everything that encompasses special education. And that's our biggest discrepancy. That's when we talk about that cross subsidy, and how do we fix it?
Right.
Every district is dealing with that. That is common.
And instructional support services, would that be like 10? Or is that, what is that exactly?
Could be your PERA.
PERA's professionals, your secretaries.
Okay. I was looking to see if there was something, now like, so the site equipment in buildings, that would be actually equipment then?
That would be maintenance of the building.
Okay. So that's gone up just a little bit. Okay. I was just trying to understand these categories better. I think one of was possibly on technology, because we've been doing a lot with technology lately. I don't know if there was something isolated here or not.
Technology would be with equipment on it.
If you have a little out?
Yep.
So actually down in that, or?
Uh, it will, yeah, it could be that one. But purchase of equipment would be in the capital area.
Remember, we did reduce that by that 40,000, so that makes sense.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Brad?
How do we get on a rotation so we're sooner in the year? Is it a, who signs up first, who contacts you first? How do, how do we get on the roster sooner?
You can just let, you know, get on.
We want to be on the roster sooner. I will email you that. I think it's really important to have this done in November.
Sure.
Just for so many different reasons, whether it's negotiations or budgeting. You know, we start looking at reductions, not reductions. All those things would just be good if we could have it done in November. I think that would be helpful. Thank you.
Briefings earlier. Only when meeting in December really pushes it back.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you for your time.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Next is on our schedule presenters is Beth, talking truth and taxation. This is our meeting.
All right, this is our yearly truth and taxation meeting. I don't think anyone is here for the, from the community for truth and taxation. I will point out, Paul, it's here, raise your hand a little bit. He's my intern. They're all like, who is he? Who is he? He's here for the tax thing. We don't get a lot of people that come to truth and taxation, but it's really important that we go through that. And there's some things that we should be very proud of in here. So I will just quickly go through this, because no one from the community is here, and I know this is kind of a dry topic. I find it extremely interesting, but that doesn't mean everyone else does. The big picture is, you know, just establishing your tax base for your community. Where our school depends on the state aid. Who collects the taxes and who spends the dollars? Obviously, the state collects the majority of it. Who's spending it is the state as well. School districts are still kind of getting a smaller portion of the pie every year. We alluded to it even in our audit. Even though the per student has gone up, cross subsidy and special education hasn't really been fixed. And our cross subsidy number is close to 624 or something for the year. And it's remarkable that that isn't being paid for. That screen does not show up really well. Hopefully you can read it. The change in the total school district operating aid kind of shows you where our levy is at. We're very fortunate that our community supported us in our last levy endeavor, and that has definitely helped us. The revenue from some of that, and then the state aid is starting to balance out. We won't go into a money year until 2019. 2018 is just mostly language. If you were here with your tax statement, I would walk through this thing with you. You get your sex tax statements. And if anyone in the community is unable to read their tax statement, I would like you to set up an appointment with me, and we can go through that one-on-one. It usually works the best to do that. Market values, realtors in the room definitely know kind of more about this than we do. Hard to predict, but obviously there's some good things happening, especially with farmland. Most of you are aware that the farm, the aid to school credit went through and giving our farmers a 40% savings, which has been quite remarkable in that area, especially on building bonds. Tax rates, this is from the county, depending on if you live on a farm, seasonal recreational apartment, or commercial industry, things like that. And again, I am going through this because there's no one here for this presentation. The thing in red did not get changed by Lori. Josh and I did change this. The total, and this is for Nora, the total tax levy is going down in 2018 by 1.1%. 2.6 was last year's number. This year it's 1.1%. And I think everyone at this table is really glad. Anytime we can lower tax, the taxes in our town, we're happy about that. So, and we're not going to get into this as well, because it doesn't impact us. Long-term facility maintenance was a little more from last year, the 2017. And if you have any specific questions, make sure that you contact me via email or phone call. But again, because we don't have anyone in the room that is here for this exact presentation, I don't see any need to go through every slide in particular. But if you have any questions, I'd love to answer them. What do you need?
I just need to be in your room.
He's so sorry.
Put on the mom hat.
Yeah, there you go. Dave, you did see that.
You have to come along with and introduce yourself.
So again, if anyone is watching this and wants to do that, I welcome. Those individual conversations tend to go a little better, so that you can go through taxes. Because not everyone understands the difference between, you know, our bonds and our levies, and the differences between those. So it's really important to sit down and go through those if you're confused. But again, I just, I'm so happy anytime we can reduce taxes to our taxpayers.
I know you always put in a lot of effort in preparation for something that usually doesn't happen.
Hoping someone will be here for it. But, yeah. One of these years, we're going to get someone here, and I'm going to be ready.
It may not be a good thing.
Right, right, yeah.
Okay. Any questions? Moving along, Heather Leskey is here, We the People. I thought we left We the People.
I did too. And I'm so glad he's in the room, because the reason we didn't leave We the People is because this young man, his junior year spent a lot of time recruiting. So he convinced some of his classmates that, one, we should do We the People. And when class started at the beginning of the year, I said to the kids, I won't do this unless I have students who are heavily invested in it, because it's a lot of work. But every single one of those students that entered that class wanted to do We the People. So it's really them, not me this year. So we competed on December 12th, and we won again. So we captured three out of the six units, which qualifies us for the national competition. I do have a meeting planned to meet with their parents, to kind of discuss the ins and the outs of what that all means and details. But if moms and dads are willing to kind of go through the work, and with permission, we will need to fundraise. In the past, it's probably been about 1,400 per student to get them out there. That includes their airfare, and then hotel, and the majority of their meals. I have a smaller class this year, 11 students, and then myself. Mr. Meyer is still helping us, but he, unfortunately, there's no way that he's going to be able to travel. So I had asked Mr. Strauss to be a male chaperone to come along. And then he's also going to kind of slowly start working with the We the People team. He's got an interest in it, so. In the past, the fundraisers that we've done, the letter campaign is very successful for us, but we just simply ask for donations. We've sold malts, we've sold Easter lilies, we've done some concessions, done our winery event. So that's kind of the scale of our fundraising.
Jake, do you see any overlap with the things that she just mentioned? As far as, no one else has taken over the lilies or anything this year?
Not that I'm aware of, no. So, pretty good at it.
So your request from the board is to okay your fundraisers to allow the kids to participate at the national level?
Yes, sir, so that we can at least raise enough funds so that families don't have to bear the expense. But of course, that'll be something else that'll get discussed in the event that moms and dads want to see their kids compete out there. If we don't raise what we need to, then the families will become responsible for it.
So the numbers had dwindled from previous years, is that right?
I have 11 students in my AP government class right now. Yep. So in terms of We the People, what that means, seven students actually have to work extra hard. Grant being one, and then I have six other students who agreed to double up on units. So when you think about We the People in the AP curriculum, these kids really are doing two very rigorous academic curriculums, boiling the one. And now I have students like Grant and a few of the others that are, it's additional information that they're taking on, so. The national competition, if you are under a class of 18, you can actually double up up to 18. So since we are 11, we can double up with seven kids.
Questions? Comments?
Congratulations.
I do have one question, and it's more correct here than not there. However, if they do the letter campaign, does that have to come into our agenda as part of money for approval?
Anything they raise, she'll let Lori know what they raise, and we'll figure that. What's nice about the letter campaign is you're going out to senators and representatives and.
Judges.
Judges. I mean, it isn't, it isn't, that is not a hard impact on our town, which I think is really nice.
Some of our largest contributions, Mr. Larrity, actually have come from outside Canafal. Not that Canafal is not very generous to us, they, they are. But we have received some very big donations from outside of Canafal.
And I just wasn't sure how that would work. Fundraising approval is something a little different than the letter?
She'll follow all of that, the same thing. It'll come in, and it'll be one of your line items on your consent agenda.
No, no, I just want to make sure we're.
Right. Yeah, it'll be kind of a new procedure for them as well, but Heather will be really good. She keeps immaculate documentation, so it'll be fine.
Just want to make sure that we're, it's all new since last year.
Sure.
It's all so, good, congratulations.
Anyone else?
Do we have to end up formally approving them to continue on with this process?
We have in the past.
We have in the past.
I think that's probably what we should do.
I'll make a motion.
One second.
Brenda has made a motion to approve fundraising to allow the We the People to make their national trip. Correct?
Yep.
And Katie has seconded that.
Yes.
Other discussion?
And I'll just remind you that in your new procedures, anytime they travel outside the state, we have that come to you. So no matter what, you would have to make a recommendation for them to leave the state of Minnesota, so.
All in favor of this approval, say aye. Opposed? It's Carrie. Congratulations.
Good luck.
When is that?
We will leave April 27th, which is a Friday, and we will return May 1st, which is a Tuesday. They'll be eager to get back, because they have AP exams.
Yeah. We'll see about that.
Thank you.
Reports and communication, student representative, that would be you.
Sweet, well, she stole the thunder on the first one. And I was going to say that we won state. And so it was, you know, a very fun experience, you know, bringing it back and going through the community. We sat in the legislative office, which many kids don't get to do at our age. And so we sat down in the chairs in the house. And I saw Pat Garofalo, which is for our district, or Senate District 58, PERA. So that was pretty cool. So that was pretty cool, to know his name on the board. So other than that, we go on Salvation Army during the season in November. We raised eight hundred and fifty dollars, which is the most that we've ever done from bell ringing. So that was a really neat intake that Cannon Falls has done. And Interact did bell ringing by Casey's. And I don't have the numbers for that, but that's cool that we did it twice this year with two different groups. Going on to student council, we're doing the Giving Tree this week and collecting toiletry items. And then while this first goes out. And then NHS is also raising food for the food shelf and that's NHS's really big fundraiser down at the elementary. They get a lot of food. And then going on dance right now is currently ranked first in the state after how they've been doing for kick. I don't know how jazz is doing, but that's, you know, pretty good start with only three tournaments in. And then boys basketball won their first game. Debate has sections on January sixth. Speech will have workshop after Christmas break. Math league is halfway through the season and as we know, there's a band concert tonight. And Lego Robotics had their competition, I think, two weeks ago. And my brother's team and Nick Angerbritzen and I think Isaiah Wildenberg got third down at RCTC, so that's cool. Joe Coyle runs that. And then high school robotics is starting up and we've been having practices on Tuesday. And January sixth is our kickoff date. And so then, you know, we'll get our information, then zooming away we go, so. So that's all I got for you guys.
Very good, any comments?
What's your brother's name?
Ryan.
Thank you.
Okay, school board committee reports. Does anyone have anything for the cause?
Staff development met and all's going well. They're, they're right on, they're still working on their alignment of their rubrics like for, from grade to grade for all of their different sections. And they're just, they're just talking about how they're going to align the PLC days in January. And it all, everything's just really timely, so there wasn't too much to report.
Tech Matt and working on the goals, trying to make those under SMART goals. I think our goal is in February to have those transformed into more of a SMART with more definitive ways to define success or not success on the goals. One of the projects that we're going to be looking at, and I guess this will take over a year to look at, is going to be a, it's a BYOD, Bring Your Own Device. There's a lot of different districts doing a lot of different things, so that's going to be something that's going to be looked at, whether how it's going to roll out, what options we give or anything, that's all to be determined yet. But Amy said it possibly could increase costs upfront, but should reduce later. So, you know, one of the things I'm looking at from this perspective is what's it going to do to our bottom line financially if we go to any other device or any other program, how's it going to affect the budget? So, you know, we'll be hearing more of that as that goes along, but that's probably going to take a year to roll out because it's, every year now we've got a third of our prices, the leases are up. So we'll have to see how that's going to roll. But every year we get an opportunity to do something different that, which is what I like, so.
He just reminded me from Amy Dombek, and I forgot to do this in the student report, so excuse me. But I've been talking to her and the Lantern is taking the initiative of that we're going to try and create a commercial for Cannon Falls as we said our numbers is down. And so, and this goes with the Lantern for Best to Snow project. So we're going to make a two-minute thirty-second video of what really makes Cannon Falls special is our athletics, activities and academics. I mean, for a small town, the amount of AP classes we have, you know, the different college courses you can go to and the amount of activities from tennis, many small teams, small schools don't have, to trap shooting and robotics and everything in between. So I thought I'd just give you guys an update on that and that's something that the Lantern is going with. And if you guys have any input or ideas for it. We're going to talk a little bit about the elementary school and kind of the neat things they're doing down there, such as the maple syrups, and that's really where we're trying to attract more students. So that was just something that we're thinking of and this is a long-term plan. We won't start doing the video until spring, but we're just trying to get some numbers together. And I've been going around asking different, you know, offices, Jake, a long time ago a bit about, you know, how we could figure out numbers for it, so.
Did Amy mention that we're also making one for the realtors?
Uh, no, she didn't tell me about that one, so.
That sounds very similar to what we're doing too.
Yeah, and then I'm thinking that hopefully we'll put the video with the Chamber of Commerce or something and then they can post on their video.
That's exactly where we're going.
And the realtors.
Interesting.
So I mean, it would be cool, a student one and an adult led one, you know, kind of show the different perspectives at Cannon Falls.
Sure, very good.
Do you feel from your perspective, Rob, in real estate, that this is very needed to have a promotional cannon?
More and more so with the demographics of who's buying homes, millennials, they are all about technology. Matter of fact, technology has overtaken a lot of the requirements when buying a home. I used to laugh when, before they would move in, they had to make sure cable and everything was hooked up. That's a reality. They check to make sure that they'll be hooked up and wired before they move in. If they don't have good service, that can be a deal breaker. So, yeah, this is why people are going to be looking more and more, not only at the houses. We as realtors have to become more tech savvy, but they also want to check everything else out, so absolutely.
The people that come in and tour our school, they no longer want me to hand them my really neat brochure. They want instant, they want a TED Talk, they want an infomercial, they, they want us to sell it. And so part of my national certification to graduate, we have to have what he's talking about. And it's going to be really, really neat because we're tying a lot of neat things in about our town and our community. But the realtors want that at their fingertips, they no longer want a brochure. It's just old school and they don't want it anymore.
And the number one, Facebook is number one marketing platform in the world right now. What they say, be the seventh largest country in the world. And every day, half of the people that belong to Facebook are on Facebook. And then YouTube is the number one video site in the world. So they're all afraid it's easy to use, but that you really, you've got to be there and be promoting thanks. Everybody's looking at that.
I think that's why we want to be one of the first ones to have it up there for the school. We want that to be their first click when they're, when they're school hunting, so it's our goal.
Biggest question we're asked, remember someone? You got internet down here?
Absolutely, yep. And then it's what options? How fast?
Okay, thank you. Any other committee reports? Okay, moving down to administrative board reports, elementary school.
She's down at the concert right now, I said I would bring up her report. It's obviously in your, in your packet as well. If you have any specific questions, she's put some nice pictures in here, talking about math night. She also has a science night coming up and a literacy night coming up. It's a great way to get the community members down into our school, so we're really excited about that. Victor the Viking came and talked about bullying. I was down there for part of that program and it was really, really fun. And Victor coming to our school is always really neat. Obviously you can see she's at the band concert tonight. Bikes for Books is a really, really neat program. If you haven't heard Glenn come and talk about it, it's pretty exciting. We've got another PLC early release and I guess I'll just kind of jump into my soup report on that. One of the things I am most proud of right now is what our principals are doing with these PLCs. I bounced around and you talked a little bit about it, the staff development. This, these early outs are the best, the best thing we can do for our staff. I am beyond impressed, you know, when we first started doing it, I'm like, oh my gosh, once a month, these kids are leaving us, you know, it's, how can this be valuable? And it's just progressively every year gotten better and better. And I think kudos to our principals because they are making sure that these are high-quality professional development for our teachers, so. Very impressive. And then Jennifer is going to continue with the kindness retreat that has been so successful with our fifth grade students that started a couple of years ago, and I'm glad to see that she's continuing that. So I probably didn't do her report justice, but that's what's going on with the elementary, very busy time of year.
That's true, I really liked seeing the pictures.
Yeah, she'll add those every month she's said enough to, so.
Okay, middle school, high school, you some mini jars, Tim? Do you have anything else to do it?
Uh, not really, I think I summed up every little street school very well.
You've been busy, busy too. There's no pictures, but.
I'm going to have pockets.
Thank her for setting that.
I think go to video.
Just for you. What's that?
Go to video.
You were pretty fired up about how the school year initially started and how seamless it seemed to be. Everything's still going pretty well?
Yeah, it is. I think it's been a pretty good year so far, you know, like always, there are blips in the road, but for the most part, things are going really well. And I'd reiterate what Beth said. I get a chance to talk to lots of principals around the state. And I feel like what we're doing with PLCs is time well spent. And not only that, but I'd like to add what we're doing with staff development. Our staff development is really, really good right now. And, and it's really, really targeted to what, what teachers want and need. And that, I think, is what's making it be really successful. So we're doing some neat things. I think I mentioned in my report that the, we took one of our, a few years ago, Beth, was it three? Is this our third year doing this now? So we took one of our workshop days and we split it into eight one-hour sessions after school. And it's given us the ability to take a theme and work with it throughout the course of the year as opposed to having a shot, a one-day shot in November or a one-day shot in January with staff development. So we've done some really neat things at the middle school, high school this year. We kind of decided to look inward at our staff and what they're expert at. So every month, we've got four or five different, different types of professional development sessions that staff can be a part of. And I think I listed some of those in my report. And that, our next one of those is coming up the day after tomorrow, so it's really good stuff.
Thank you. Community ed activities.
Jake, I really don't have much to report, it's really, really busy with all winter activities and everything's in full swing. And our winter-spring community ed brochure will be out either next week or the first week of two thousand eighteen, so. We're on its way, so.
Jake, operations and maintenance, we got, we got a report from Dave, anything you'd like to add? You're just tired.
Well, I'm riding on the coattails of Jake here, it's just a busy time of the season between the rest of this month and going into next month. Dance, basketball, wrestling, I mean, everything, the concerts we have going on, it's just a really busy time, but things are going about as, I think smoothly as they possibly could. So things are going well, we're just really busy.
David, I got a question just with, I was out at the tennis courts about two weeks ago and looking at them and you probably were out there and saw there's stress cracks in there right now already, have you seen those across the nets? Yeah. What do we say about that? What's, what's to get in the warranty on that to guarantee? Was there three months out, were we supposed to have those stress cracks in there already? Is that something to be expected or is that something we should be taking pictures and sending those in or talking to the people, you know?
Well, I think when it comes to the warranty, maybe Jake, you could jump in on that more than me. You kind of dealt with that vendor.
Sorry.
No, go ahead.
I'll have to check them out, I did notice them in between the courts. Is that where you saw them?
And also all the way down, all the net lines.
Those were those really big ones where Jake, which were, I, I think he even said as we were out there, we're going to be difficult.
Yeah, he did say that the ones between the courts would come back. He didn't use the same process between the courts because it was on a plain surface and it would have just, it would have got a lot more expensive. So we knew going in that those would come back, maybe within a year. It was disappointing to see.
The question is, I'm seeing it in three months.
Yeah.
And that's a little disappointing, I'm not so sure if that's appropriate or reasonable.
I'll make sure I go check it out.
Yeah, because that one large one in the southeast corner, that never came back, that looks good. But I'm just wondering about these other ones, if they're.
I'll check it out.
Yeah, okay.
He was really good to work with, so.
Okay.
He, actually, we did find one other spot, a little kind of a hole came back. And he was down within a week and he fixed it all, so.
Thanks. You're right, too soon.
Just with the facility, we went through ten million dollar renovations and everything. Everything's working good, heating costs, you know, I know we had a report a while ago about our energy savings.
I send every quarter when I get that, I will always send that out to you guys so you can kind of see where at. Rob had asked me if they could add in what the temperature was at the time to kind of make a comparison. He said it would have to be a different chart, but he's going to add that for next time. Just so that we know, you know, our energy costs are down, but what was the temperature? Well, we know we had a really warm November, so they should be down. So they said they could add that, they can't do it on the same chart because it's programmed in, but he said he could add a different chart.
I know our energy consumption is down though. And the key part of that is the fact that we have more equipment running than we've ever had running and we're using less energy.
More equipment running, like?
As in everything in the building, exhaust fans, VFEs, equipment in general.
The way it's supposed to run.
Correct. And to be able to be using less energy, running more equipment is a good step in the right direction.
Right, you know, despite this today on Facebook, I got my posting from a year ago. Twenty-three below zero with a thirty-six below zero wind chill one year ago.
Yeah.
It's like, well, that makes a difference.
That's definitely a big difference, but you know, when you have temperatures like that, it also makes it very difficult to moderate your temperatures. When you have temperatures like that, your, your building's under load and it's much easier to maintain, believe it or not. When you get temperatures right now, I mean, what, two weeks ago it was sixty? You know, I mean, so it, it actually makes it difficult and you're probably going to have some fluctuations in your, you know, consumption just because you're so up and down between day and night. But that's Minnesota.
Yeah.
I mean, that, I don't think that's ever going to change.
Wait till Sunday.
Yeah, well, I didn't want to, I didn't want to talk too much about it.
I think remember on that too, it's part of being more efficient, electricity, the cost per kilowatt is more expensive, so.
Much more, almost double. Fifty percent more.
Really?
Yeah.
So even though you're down, it's deceiving because the cost of kilowatt is crazy.
The building approval is going to show more expensive.
Okay, moving on to technology, we don't have our rep here, soup, soup report.
I feel like you guys have heard me talk enough.
Okay, public input. Anyone in the audience have anything to discuss concerning school board, school district politics or questions you may have? No, moving on. Consideration to approve the finance report.
I don't have the exact page number, but the cash flow worksheet, it's just a kind of short and brief version of the finance report. You see on top, the large cash balances in Merchants Bank and US Bank. The Merchants Bank refunded the two thousand eight A bond and since there's a short turnaround from a refund until the debt service is due, that cash came out to us as the merchant bank. The US Bank is the two thousand seven A that we're funding. And because of the duration of time between the refunding and the payment, that's in escrow. So in the end of January, we're making those payments for debt service to pay off the refunding of both two thousand seven A, two thousand eight A, as well as the two thousand sixteen A, which is the long-term facility maintenance and some OPEB. So of this, you know, sixteen point seven million dollar cash balance you'll see here, about fourteen, fourteen and a half million, that will be going out the door at the end of January. Which Merchants Bank may or may not appreciate seeing that and kind of holding, keeping a clair on that. That's really the most significant thing in this document is our debt service payments will be going at the end of January. We still remain very much cash flow positive at that point and then no need of having to any anticipation of borrowing. The only thing I'd like to add on top of that, since we've gone through the audit dollars, you know, the time probably got a little drawn out as far as the audit goes, but the process itself and the work internally, I thought went very well this year. They came out for four days and were done with the internal stuff here in four days. So that process, I think, you know, if we do it a year in a year, it gets to be a little bit better. And I thought that that was pretty smooth. Unfortunately, it just got a little bit delayed in the time to be in out and finished it, so. Anything else to ask and certainly answer what I can?
Don't have a straightforward finance report this one.
Any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Jerry to approve the finance report. Seconded by Kurt. Other discussion? All in favor of approval, say aye. Opposed? And there was a technology report on page six for anybody that wants to take a look at that. Was not paying attention to that, my bad. Consent agenda, items under consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted in one motion. In the event a board member wants to discuss any particular item, it can be removed for a separate action. Take a moment to review.
Does it just mean, does it seem like we paid a lot for the lease on the roof of the elementary school in class in this period?
It may seem like, did you see it pop off and up off? There's four checks that have been split between the banks and with the loan. So it's two payments a year, seventy-nine thousand dollars total, so you see roughly eight thousand dollars this year, this time of year. And then June, you'll see another eight thousand.
It seems like you see it more often than not.
Hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year, so that's a few years left.
Anything else?
I would just like to point out that Marsha Kouts has resigned. She has been a tremendous employee and I know Jake would reiterate the same thing. We welcome her back. We welcome her back at any time. And I wish Lori was here because she would know the exact years that Marcia's worked for the district. But her dedication to kids and especially the preschool program is just hard to even explain. And so, I just want to publicly thank Marcia for her years of service at Cannon Falls Schools. And again, we hope that she can come back and sub and work for us again. She's been an asset to our school. So, thank you, Marcia.
Thank you. Anything else for the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Rob to approve.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Kurt. Other discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is Kerry. No old business. Under new business, consideration to approve a seventeen, eighteen Invenergy career scholarship, which never ceases with our community.
Yeah, it's just, they never go away. They just continue to add more. It's up on the screen if you want to look at it. Obviously, we run all scholarships through the school board, but we just want to give a big thank you to Invenergy. Again, giving two awards of fifteen hundred dollars is just, it continues to add to it. Last year was a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars of scholarships. I mean, you just don't see that in communities our size. So, so extremely proud of our community always stepping forward. So, my recommendation obviously is to accept this scholarship.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Kurt, seconded by Brenda, to approve the seventeen, eighteen scholarships. Other discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry? I thought that had something to do with the vote. Consideration to approve the final levy certification payable fiscal year eighteen.
We've got the, just the screenshot, the levy certification. They can't actually go ahead and approve it until it's been approved at board level. What you don't see behind all eight numbers, the thirty-eight, thirty-nine page documents, that the state moves together to make everything really difficult and confusing to figure out. But there is a one-page summary that kind of boils everything down by fund. And overall, like Beth said in the truth and taxation portion, our overall levy is down about one point one percent. Anytime there's a decrease and we're still getting the funds that we need for our district, I think that's a good thing for taxpayers. The big decrease in funds are gonna be in the debt service. And that's largely in, as a result of the refunding of the 2007 A and 2008 A debt service, which is saving our taxpayers about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars roughly a year. I've spread out across everyone. So, that's a nice impact to the taxpayer. Doesn't really help the district out in terms of extra cash into the district for us using the general fund. But as the overall levy, it's a real big reason why the overall levy is down one point one percent. There is increase of certain percentages within other funds. The general fund largely, that increases because of the long-term facility maintenance. So, there's an increased long-term facility maintenance in the general fund, but that's a reduction in the debt service. So, one offsets the other. But I think the big picture overall is to understand that we're still going forward with everything. We're down one point one percent overall on the levy. Our recommendation always has been that we levy the max. This helps any sort of fluctuations or variances or things that may occur in miscalculations. It doesn't bind us to one specific number. We vote to approve the max. And if there's any changes there, we're not gonna be, we're essentially harmless by any changes that are made. So, our recommendation would be to approve the max levy. And as the overall result, there'll be a slight decrease in levy from last year. If you have questions, I can do my best to answer. And like I said, there's a thirty-nine page document that I really want to get to the nuts and bolts of how it's all calculated.
Anyone have any questions or statements for him?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Jerry to approve the final levy cert, paper eighteen.
Opposed.
Seconded by Rob. Other discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry? Consideration to approve the resolution directing admin to make recommendations for reductions in programs and positions and reasons therefore.
Again, you do this every December. It will be important after hearing the audit report tonight that, you know, the last couple of years, we've been fortunate not to have to make much for reductions. But we will need to look at some right sizing of things. There's some grants that are coming to an end. Instructional coaches through GCD, that will be coming to an end. The funding mechanisms for ADSS grants is changing a little bit. Special education, we have to have a maintenance of efforts. We can't reduce in special education. But the cost of special education continues to go up. And that means that we need to kind of right-size everything else. So, this is nothing new. You do this every December. You're giving admin. In January, we sit down and we basically do a retreat in this office and we, in this room, I mean. And we go through all of that. Just to remind some of our newer people, that then moves on to the finance committee. The finance committee is pretty quiet until it comes to this time of year. We sit down with the finance committee, which I think my main rep is Bob?
Kurt.
Kurt? Okay.
Us.
Us, yeah, there you go. There's bankers on that committee. There's a teacher, rep, technology, those types of things. So, this year, I do anticipate some, looking through some programs. We know that there's gonna be some savings in technology. We've already reduced it by forty thousand dollars this last year. I could early predict another thirty thousand dollars. We're done with the wiring projects. And we're done with some of these big things. We've got a lot of devices in kids' hands already. So, I see some good things coming in that direction. With an incoming kindergarten of sixty-five, we're gonna move kindergarten roundup up from April first into early February so that we've got those numbers a little more accurate early on so that we can come to you right away and let you know how many teachers we're gonna need in each grade level. So, I think there's gonna be a lot of really great conversation about what's going on in our district. That may or may not mean reductions, I don't know. But with an audit coming in at, in the seven percent range, we need to really make sure that we're watching every penny. Okay? So, that's what that means. So, Brenda, you can move forward the resolution.
Need to have a motion in a second.
There you go.
I need a motion.
Motion by Kurt.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Katie to approve the resolution. Okay, Brenda.
Go on the resolution directing the administration to make recommendations for reductions in programs and positions and reasons therefore. Kerry?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Brenda, yes. Katie?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Okay, review our procedures for cooperative sports. Isn't it somewhat a topic, I guess, for who won?
Sure. We are, Jake and I just had a fabulous meeting with Superintendent Kelly from Randolph and their A.D., Aaron Soul, who you remember from Cannon Falls. And the four of us sat down just to make sure we're all on the same page. There's been a lot of conversation this year. We are following the same procedures that Northfield does when they charge us for students that co-op in alpine skiing, in gymnastics and those types of things. Same exact procedures. It was really great to sit down with Randolph and hear them say, "This is, you're doing it right. Thank you. Everything in here is right." They understand the way we're doing it. The conversation, why it kind of came, the conversation is that they were going to do what we were gonna do four years ago, and that is to charge the student athlete. And the problem you run into there is sometimes those costs for gymnasts or alpine, I mean, they can get into thousands of dollars to play those sports. And they hit the same kind of roadblock Jake did when he tried to do that four years ago. Families just won't do that. And so, Randolph has decided to pick up those expenses like we have. They understand that resurfacing our track is gonna be close to eighty thousand dollars. They understand that putting in a new tennis court is close to forty-five thousand dollars. All of those things cost money. And to be a part of a co-op, they fully understand that they need to be paying a portion of that if they're going to be a part of our teams. I think it was a great meeting, Jake. I don't know if you thought anything different. It felt like we were on the same page. So, this is more informative. Because this is new, the student athlete will pay the one twenty-five, the cost that it costs every student to pay, to play. If they are a free and reduced student, they, again, would not pay that. I mean, we follow the same state guidelines for that. And so, the rest of the expenditure would be picked up by the school district, just like we pick up for Northfield. So, I think a lot of resolution has come from this. We'll move forward at the winter season. We will bill out at the end of the season so we know actual costs and, or true costs instead of an estimated cost. Because anything you do at the beginning of the season, you almost have to go back to last season and you give it your best guess. This will be much more actual. So, I just want to say thank you to Randolph. We ran into a busing situation where we didn't have a bus ready to go. Jake called over there and they found us a bus and a driver to take the team. Again, that'll come off their bill. So, it's kind of a cost savings for them too. So, I just, I feel like the relationship is just continuing to get stronger and stronger all the time.
Do we just work with Randolph? They're the only school we co-op with.
Or that they come, that they come in? Okay.
You know, in conversation with the board members in the past, this has always been a cost that they wanted to push on to the individual participant. And it's really, it would really be hard for a family to justify fourteen hundred and fifty dollars for their kid to wrestle on top of the one twenty-five that we charge them in addition to. So, I'm glad to hear that they're taking, they're stepping up and paying for these things because that would be hard for families.
Jake, did I miss anything? I didn't mean to talk over you on...
No, like you said, it was a great conversation. They're very understanding. And it was a good, really, really good.
Do we, this doesn't have to be an action item, does it?
You know, it was meant to be listed as an update. I just wanted to make sure you guys understood what we were doing. I would, no action needs to be taken.
Yeah, I don't think so. Okay, informational. Our next boardman meeting is our annual organization meeting. So, we'll spend the bulk of our time there, okaying things that we do on an annual basis. Upcoming meeting, January twenty-two, twenty eighteen, review of the crisis plan. Anything else you'd like to get added for the subsequent meetings? You can contact Lori or Beth.
I know where you want to get going too, Bob. But I've got a question, you know, looking at this audit, I'm gonna say I'm just kind of cautiously concerned. When you look at the general fund and our general expenditures are going up and our general fund balances going down, I'm wondering with us going into giving you guys the okay to go ahead and start making these cuts, do we get together as a board and start looking at, "What are our goals here, guys? Where do we want our general fund balance to be?" And right now, we're just kind of going with it. I think we should get together and say, "Hey, if we want to be at eight percent, how are we gonna get there? What are our bigger expense items? What are our bigger budgeted items? And then decide where do we want to be with those? Are there some cuts that we can take out of those and then direct, you guys take it from there? But what's important to the district in general?
You have set my goal at ten percent.
Understood, understood. But we're going into a time here right now where I think we need to be a little bit more aggressive in looking at what our expenditures are and where we want to go with them. Because we're, we've got a, there's a pattern here. And we're, our class sizes are going down. And I think we gotta be proactive. And that's, that's what I see.
I, it's very valid, but would we meet first as a finance committee to talk this over and then bring it to the board?
I don't think we need to. I think we know where, then this is me. I just think we know where there's a pattern here, where it's going. And it's just, we've got some big budget items out there. We know what they are. Do we want to look at those a little bit closer and just see?
Like what? Just give me a couple of examples?
Well, or some of our bigger expenditures, you know, the one-on-one initiative. Not saying, but are there expenses that we can see there? Are there ways we can take from that a little bit right now?
But you heard me say that we're, and we already did forty thousand. Look at another thirty thousand.
Understood, understood.
That could hurt if we hit more than eighty.
You may have to be more proactive than that. That's what I'm saying. Because we got some expenditures here, guys. But...
Well, we need to...
Go ahead.
See, we need to look at the, because the per student, we're spending about two hundred and fifty dollars more per student than, you know, the revenue we're getting. That's the funding expenses going out.
And you know, that was a, that was a tough discussion we had last year when, you know, what do we do with that incoming kindergarten, that first grade? You know, we could've gone to three, because you would instantly gotten rid of that two fifty if we would've gone to three sections. We brought forward that fourth and fifth grade situation. We ended up bringing it back. You know, we have put, we have presented reductions that have been brought back. I wanted to hold off maybe a little bit on the tennis court. I understand why we moved forward, those kinds of things. We are a team and we're gonna get there. Let us do what the resolution is first. Let us bring that forward. You have every right in the world to not accept that or to see where it's at. But I would follow, suggest to follow the process first and let us bring that forward. Because we may see, we may see things differently on what we need as far as reductions. If you don't agree with them, that would be the time or the place, I think.
I'm saying, we need to set maybe a goal of where we're going down from the, where I have to. Well, I'm not so sure. We're sitting at five, not even six percent. We're going down.
You're at seven point eight.
We're at six point, yeah, we're not, we're almost seven percent, right? Six point, seven one.
Five and seven.
Yeah, but you can't go in unfunded, but yeah.
Right. No, I'm just saying, guys, we have a pattern here. And it's been going, the general fund has been going down. Our expenses have been up every year. I think we need to, I know you're saying, oh, we know what our general fund balance is. But we really haven't set that up and said, "This is what we need to make. How are we gonna get there? And how are we gonna establish that eight percent if that's what we want?"
Kurt, we have brought forward reductions that you have brought back many times.
Understood, understood. I'm just saying, I think we need to get together and get a little bit more of a handle on where our general expenses are. And we may have to say, "Look," you know, we may have to cut this for this year just to get to a certain spot. I don't know. But I don't like this pattern. And that's what I'm saying.
I don't like it.
And it's something that we may have to look at a little bit closer.
Here's my input. And not that I disagree. But if we sit down as a collective group and have a conversation, there's so much that we don't know until the administration team gets together and gives us...
But we do know...
We could throw stuff out there, but we don't know the whole picture.
But we do know that we spent another three hundred thousand dollars a year for one-on-one initiatives. We know that.
Right.
You know, going forward, I'm just saying, we need to collectively look at where we're at and just decide, you know, where are our expenses? How big are our expenses? And look at that. And then you, certainly you can come to us and let us know where you think you're gonna go with these. And that's, that's your job. But I think we need to, as a board, have to say, "Okay, is this important to us as a district? We've invested the money here. We've invested the money here. Are we overextended? Do we look at that? Are we overextended with our district? There's a real possibility we've overextended ourselves. We've got, our class sizes are going down. We need to take a good, hard look at where we're going in the next five years."
If we, if we look at that first year, I think, we made a value judgment to reduce, to reduce our fund balance in order to take care of some real needs that we had. So, you know, although we're going down, if you take a look at that first year, there was a marked drop. And that was what we supported. And when it, when it did drop, we went to the administration and says, "Where are your priorities that we should be making purchases now that we say we've got an overfunded fund balance? What are we gonna do?" So, we asked them to prioritize. I think conversely, when we're in the position we are, we ask our, we ask our administration, "What are you gonna do to get us back up to eight or above?" And I think just like when we asked them to spend our money wisely when we spent down, we asked them to say, "Where are we gonna cut here?" Which is kind of our standard operating procedure. I'm with you on this as well. That, it's, it's a reminder to us that this is a constant job. Budget is a constant job. But we do have to look to them to make those value judgments or at least bring some recommendations. I don't know if you guys remember, but when we were first making some extensive cuts in your first year, we had them bring back twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-five things. Let's prioritize what we want to cut here when we were really in dire straits. And they did that for us. So, I think the same thing needs to happen in reverse.
Beth's mentioned right sizing too, which she will be doing.
What I have prepared for you for the January board meeting is if you want to get to eight point two percent, nine point two percent, and ten point two percent, where you want to be. And under each category, I've got what you would need to do to reach that goal. And so, it is kind of a priority from the admin team. We'll be continuing to work on that document so that it's accurate when we get it to you. But depending on where you want to be. But, but remember, when you make large purchases that, you know, weren't in the original budget, that's what, those are the biggest impact things that, that hurt our, you know, the overall budget. When we need to get a bus and they are ninety-two thousand dollars. And we certainly are budgeting for those now. But, you know, those, those things are small percentages of the overall budget. So...
Well, thank you for asking. I did the report earlier that should help with that.
I think it'll, I think it'll help. But that gives you kind of where you want to be and what you think. You know, we can go from there. Mike, I really do recommend, please let us at least bring that forward so that you can see what we think is a priority. Then you can certainly go from there. And that, those are helpful because then they're directives. Then I can go back and say, "This has been a directive that we need to, need to follow through on." Currently, we have a goal of ten percent. So, that's where I'm gonna be going with this, is ten percent. Getting you back to ten. Every year that you've set a goal for me, that following year, that's where I've gotten you. So, that's where I, I need to get you back to is ten percent.
On that note, but a different note, is there any update on negotiations that affect our budget too?
I think we'll know a little bit more when... I think we'll know a little bit more when, uh, we'll be reviewing the, the audit. I, there, there was some idle conversation that our, our fund balance was gonna be easily double digits, and that didn't come from our side of the table, so I think it's a stark reminder to people that, you know, you can't use UFRs or anything else to calculate where we are. So, yeah, I think they are, now that they have the audit, we need to push forward with it, and this is gonna be a valuable piece for us.
No, how does that fit in with the budgeting process? And if we're still negotiating, and you're trying to fix the budget or project, do we need to have that negotiations done and set for the next two years before you can really do what you need to do?
For sure, I mean, this was supposed to be done on June thirtieth.
Right.
Anytime you got this, you're, you're, Josh and I are aware to be. You know, if we were to go by the last session, they're a full percentage away from each other, which is eighty-three thousand dollars. So that's significant, I mean, that's a full percentage point, you know, when, when you're talking about, okay, we're at seven point eight.
Right.
Well, now we're at eight point eight if we, you know, were to settle one way or the other. So, those are definitely factors that I don't know what to do with, but I have to just go with what we've budgeted in the past, and I have to do my very best with that. It's like budgeting for special education. I actually like budgeting for technology, because I know exactly what it's gonna be, and I don't let anyone go a dollar over it. I can't do that to special education, I can't say, oh, boy, a new kid in the district, you know? I, I don't have the luxury of doing that. So I actually like the accounts that are, once they turn yellow, you can't spend any more money. You know, I love looking at Dave and saying, no, can't spend anymore, you're at your max. You know, you don't get to do that in some of those other categories, so, um, yeah, that's tough.
Yeah, we were, you, you may know that we were hoping to get this audit in November, which would have sped up our process a little bit, and now we're looking at this as, we just gotta get it done. And, uh, so, you're right.
Tenement plan is to meet with them Wednesday?
Wednesday, yeah.
Get back, back on the hook.
Yeah, that's what we all love it, huh? Full side.
Before you, um, go into your adjournment, I want to note that Paul Anderson is here tonight, he is from Anoka, Hennepin. He is my intern, till when? When are you stuck with me till, the rest of the year?
Soon as I get those three hundred and twenty. I'm just nearing three hundred, so.
Okay, so we're almost to our end, but Paul is my sixth intern, um, one of my very favorite, I think he's doing well, and when you get him on visit, I think you actually really like Cannonballs a lot.
Yeah, it's, it's interesting to compare a district of this size to Anoka, Hennepin, obviously with forty-one thousand students, but then, uh, another district I've been working with is my own students' district of Roseville, which is smaller in terms of the twin cities and certainly for Anoka, but way bigger than Cannonfall, so it's been really nice to compare and contrast the three districts.
You like us the best, though. It's okay to tell the truth.
When you say intern, what does that mean to laypeople?
Well, that I, that I completed my coursework for my superintendent's license, and I have to, you know, accumulate three hundred and twenty hours of working in three different districts, basically. I've chosen three, they, they require two different districts. But I've, I like, I'd like to look at different organization's size and how systems and structures are put in place to, to support students.
You're a principal or an assistant principal?
I'm an elementary principal.
Okay.
He's, he's got a lot to offer, I think he's gonna be a very good superintendent someday, I'm really excited to see what he does, and it's been fun, I learned just as much from my interns as they seem to kind of gather from us. I'm lucky enough to go up to St. Mary's and present to their classes, and that's where I met Paul, so it's been kind of neat to, I don't know, neat to meet people from different districts as well, so, thank you for coming down. Glad you were here for a good board meeting.
Okay, I think we've run through everything we need to run through, I would look for a motion, what you're showing, Jerry? Rob, could you second?
No.
I'll second.
All right, thank you, Katie.
Seems like I got a band concert to do.
Right.
Any other discussion?
No.
All in favor of adjournments, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are finished.